Good evening and welcome to the ACTON School Committee meeting of Thursday, October 8, 2020. And we will begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any adjustments to the agenda today?
There are no adjustments and the committee will go into executive session after the regular meeting.
Any comments from the public? Okay, celebration of learning.
So I asked Lori and Mike to give us an overview of some parent PD professional development they did last week, but I was very impressed with. They did it through Zoom and do you need the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move. I'll just turn it over to Lori and Mike and they can fill in on what they did.
So we talked about as a staff how to help parents with the technology that we are currently using the different platforms like Zoom, Seesaw, and Google Classroom. And we decided maybe what we should do, oh, I can't, I gotta join that guest first. We decided maybe we should do a tech night, send out a Zoom link and have parents and families log in. We didn't have a huge turnout, but I think those that were on, we had some great conversation. And we were able to take them through, and I won't go through all of the slides, I'll probably go quickly. I merged the two slide shows together because what we did was we did a separate night for K-2 and then for 3-8 because K-2 is using Seesaw, 3-8 is using Google Classroom. So rather than put it all in one, we separated the two nights. Chad DePrisco joined us for K-2 night, so he actually helped us walk through Seesaw because he knows that program better.
And the 3-8 night, we had like 10 teachers show up.
Yeah, we had a lot of the teachers online. So that was great because when parents had particular questions, they were able to get their questions answered by the teachers. So we put an agenda up and with objectives that the purpose of the meeting was to become familiar with the tech tools that students are using in school and at home and for parents and kids to learn where to find resources when they're in need of support and they don't have us because they're maybe home in their remote setting. So we went through the Zoom platform, the Clever platform, which is where they can find their remote resources, the Google Classroom and Seesaw. And then I'll share with you a link that Mike has now created on the district website that has a lot of resources for students and parents. So we went through Zoom, we told them what the major features were, that we wanted them to be able to mute and unmute, start and stop their video, their camera, that they could change their speaker and gallery view, and then where to find the chat box so that if they had a question or a teacher asked them to put something in the chat box, they would know where to find that. And we also just encouraged them if, you know, for any reason they got kicked off or something got interrupted, just to go back to the link, click it again, and the teacher or whoever was facilitating would let them back into the meeting. We went over our PBIS guidelines with them about being online and what does it mean to be safe, respectful, and responsible when you're in a digital meeting. And we've worked on these with the PBIS committee and have shared them with all of our students. So we made sure parents were aware of our expectations. We then showed them through screenshots how to find the certain tools in Zoom. So we walked them through that. How to raise their hand because we in this meeting did not, we had them muted and if they had a question, they were going to put it in the chat box or we would unmute them. And then if they had a question, they could raise their hand. So Mike monitored that during the meeting and anytime somebody raised their hand or put something in the chat box, we could stop and answer their questions. So we showed them how to do that. We showed them how to take the student's badge, their Clever badge that they had and how to use it to log in so they could find the online resources. And then we also talked to them about if you don't have your Clever badge at home, here's how you can get in to Kids' Corner and Clever and all the resources that they need. We talked to the middle school kids in particular about the MacBooks because grades seven and eight have MacBooks and there are some additional things they need to do when they're at home in order to use their MacBook to get onto the website and their Zoom meetings and for us to be able to monitor what they're doing online so we can make sure that they're following all the safety protocols that we have. So we went through MacBooks with the middle school. Mike walked them through with these nifty little screenshots. Yeah.
In order to make sure that the Macs are protected, I had, they are redirected to our firewall, our content filter. And in order to get and connect to the content filter, they have to click on this MacBook Connect link that was created on the website. And then I had them log into Google Chrome with their account so they could have easy access to a bunch of bookmarks I supplied through Google Administration. And in there is the MacBook Connect link as well. And as they log into Google Chrome, it also gives us the ability to keep an eye on them a little better.
Then we showed them what they would see when they went into Kids' Corner, where they would find their resources like Dreambox and iXL, Lexia, Discovery Education, their Zooms, even though they don't really have to go here to get Zoom because that's in their Seesaw and Google Classroom. But this is where they find all those resources that teachers might be having them use.
Just this week, I think it was, I pushed out the family portal for Clever so parents can log into the Clever portal using their account and have access to all of their child's resources. So if their, you know, school device fails, they can always use their personal device through their parent's account.
This is when Mr. DePrisco walked them through Seesaw, where they would find their activities, their messages, how to go in and watch the teacher give directions to something and how they would add their responses. So we took them through all of the screenshots for Seesaw and what the work looked like when it was finished in their journal and where it would appear. Where they will find their Zoom links. Where they find their notifications and comments from the teacher. We did the same with Google Classroom. We explained that if you have a student in grades three through five, they only have one Google Classroom. And within that Google Classroom, they have ELA, Math, Science, and Social Studies and then all their specials. Whereas in grades six through eight, they have five Google Classrooms. They have one for each content area and then one where all the specials collaborate within a Google Classroom. We were trying to keep it so kids didn't have to go to so many different places. And then again, we just walked them through what's the calendar look like, where do you find that? It has all your assignments in it, where's your to-do list so that they know what they need to do, what's coming up. We had a look at the stream, where the teachers put notifications and announcements every day. We wanted them to be sure that they looked through that. And that's when sort of the teachers piped in a little bit and talked about how they use the stream and what the parents could find in that stream each day. And then we took them into the classroom tab, where they'd find their assignments and that they can click on each topic on the side and only see one content area at a time if that was easier for them. Where to find their Zoom meetings, how to view their work. How to turn things in because that was something in the spring that some of the kids really struggled with. So where do we find that turn-in button? I have to click it once, I have to click it twice, sometimes I need to attach something. So we talked a little bit about the process for doing that. And then the website, and I can take you there actually, so I've got that here. On the website, there's a hybrid learning link now. And when we open that, it has all those things that you were just seeing. So you can click into laptops, it tells them the information we had shared with them about the Chromebook and the MacBook. There's the Clever page, you click into that, you get more resources.
The family portal I added underneath that one so that parents can click on that and log in.
And that's where they'll find the information about Zoom, more about Google Classroom. And these, what they contain is like, just I'll click on Google Classroom. It's more just little videos for them, how to do certain things if they have forgotten and they need help.
Go back and scroll down. Those are the videos recorded from the meetings. And if you scroll down a little bit more, there's some documentation below, including the slide shows that we presented.
So as I said, we didn't have, you know, a ton of parents log in, but I think there was enough that, and we kept telling people that we would post it on the website anyway. So if they missed it, they'd have that information or they could go back and flip through the slides again or listen to the recording. So the information is there for the parents.
So I guess a question for you is how are teachers doing with this, all this online stuff? Would you say 90% are on board and are doing well, you know?
Yeah, I'm not going to say it's not challenging. I think, you know, they're still trying to figure out when they've got kids in the classroom and kids online at the same time. But I think we're, they're getting into a routine now of what they should be assigning when kids are at home and then, you know, what they should be doing when kids are here in person.
Mary, if I could, it depends on how you define on board. I would say everybody's on board, like nobody's kicking and screaming and saying, this isn't going to work. I think there's various different, there's different levels of abilities to use and understand technology here in the building. And I tell you what this has done is it's really pushed the envelope on everything Mike's been saying for years in regards to embracing technology. And it kind of took a pandemic to kind of bring some things to the front of the table. And I think everybody understands this isn't going away. So overall, in comparison to what I know in other schools, I think we're doing excellent.
It's a shame there aren't going to be snow days anymore.
We're working on that. I'll give you an update on that one too later. Excellent. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you so much. That's a very, very.
I attended those Zoom meetings with my headphones on, my phone, I didn't see it, but I could hear it. And it sounded great, you know, I didn't see what they were doing, but I could hear the great questions from the parents. Yeah.
Amazing. I can't grasp it. You know, it's just what the kids have to do today. I mean, you know, it's just.
It's nice to know though that you guys have got resources out there to try to, you know, search and figure out an answer.
And not only that, but I think it's great that we've reached out to the parents and saying, you know, we're not leaving you high and dry. This is, we'll help you as much as we can and this is, this is what you need to know for on the days at your home and to let them know that you're here for support and that it isn't just, okay, we've got them a couple of days and you've got them the rest of the time. So I think it's great that you've given them this kind of support and the resources along with that, but especially the support, yeah. Anybody else have anything?
Sorry, Andy, I got ink on the. But anyway, I didn't know my pen was broken.
Okay then.
No, I just wanted to add one more thing because I think for years, probably 10 or more, I always thought, why aren't we using technology? Because we're a small school, but we want to offer our kids things. If we wanted to offer French or a different language, I always thought, why can't? I didn't know the term Zoom then, but why couldn't we do that online somehow? And it seemed like you couldn't get to that. It was like, no, we'll think about that another time. And now, like you said, it brought it to the forefront that you can use this remote learning, I felt, in a classroom setting. So I hope we can offer more in the future.
Great. Anything else on to number three? Then let's move on to number four, how I look for motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
A bid by Mary, second by Jeanette. Any discussion? All in favor? I don't know. Okay, number five, we'll start with the superintendent's report.
Sure. I have several bullets just as an update. This, I guess it's been a busy time since I last was with you. And I just kind of did my bullets on a post-it. We're in week five and all is well. We're doing really well at ACTON Elementary School. Very happy with the staff, the attitude, you know, and sometimes you've got to remind yourself during a global pandemic. It's weird. We're getting used to our masks and we even had a staff meeting the other day about, you know, kids and being complacent with masks. I'm so used to them now, they're kind of fidgeting with them or pulling them down and it's not in a manner in which they're being defiant. They're just used to them. It's like playing with your glasses or anything else. And we just got to remind them and each other sometimes. I'm used to having mine on. Most, we've had like zero issues, I say zero, we've had very few issues with kids wearing them. And the rule is if you're defiant about a mask, unfortunately, you might have to become a remote learner because I can't have you in the building unsafe. And I've had one conversation with a young person about that and I think it has made a difference because the mom was involved. But not to get in the weeds on that, but we're doing great. And, you know, teaching and learning seems to be as good as it can get, given the fact we're in a global pandemic. Week five, no, no issues. We're still in the yellow zone from red, green, yellow, red. As you remember, last week, we're kind of keeping an eye on things. We anticipate to stay in the yellow zone. It's the widest band of places you can kind of live in this pandemic according to the Department of Ed's coding. Some other districts and some other, I should say, other counties are in yellow too. But we started in yellow, we remain in yellow. Sanford High School starts next week, so as many of you, you have kids there, you probably know the schedule better than I do, but they started and then end up closing. They had their first week with, you know, like freshmen, sophomores, junior seniors. So they didn't really have everybody there and that didn't, that spread quickly, the COVID. So they've shut down, they did their thing. It didn't make any sense to open this week with them. Monday's a holiday next week and this week they have Friday off. So they're going to start all over again on Tuesday. We have one bus, we're down to one bus running for the high school kids. That bus will be running and the times have been adjusted. We've notified parents twice via Blackboard, so the high school parents should be all set. They should know their bus routes. The times changed a little bit later, which is good because we know what time the school opens and when we need to be there. So we look forward to bringing our Sanford High School kids in from ACTON, starting on Tuesday. And trunk or treat, just an update, you, those of you that have, you know, relatives with kids in the school will be updated via Blackboard that I met with the PTG over the last two Mondays. This last Monday though, I had a very candid conversation with them. I surveyed all York County school superintendents and asked, what are you doing at your schools for Halloween? You know, are you doing any public events? All of them that responded to me, which was probably a little bit more than half, said no. And of two that said they were doing something, one coastal, a coastal York County town is having something at their high school parking lot, but it's run by their parent-teacher association. It's at the high school parking lot because it's the biggest parking lot. They're doing something and he's not even sure what, but he said, do it. Another one down very close to the New Hampshire border, south of us, they're doing something through their rec department and it's like at the town hall, it's not even at the school. Nothing else is going on that I can put my hand on in this area. So I went to PTG and I said, I've got a couple of concerns, obviously. If we were to run something, you know, you could have people coming in from Newfield and from Limmington and everywhere because we're the only thing going on and who's to tell, you know, a goblin from a witch in a car when they're coming through? Because it was going to be like a reverse parade thinking thing so we could do it safely? And they agreed that would be impossible. And the other one is, just like anything, when you're the only show in town, if something happens, it kind of becomes your fault de facto, right? And I'm like, I don't know if we want to bring that kind of attention to the town for the only one doing something, something happens. And they agreed. And I kind of, in a way, I felt kind of bad because I kind of felt like a, you know, bad guy canceling something, but it makes sense to not do it this year. So instead, in school, we met with the staff and they rolled up their sleeves and generated some ideas that we could do with kids. On the last week of October is a blue schedule for three days. So on Wednesday, it's the last day for the blue scheduled kids. And on Friday, which happens to be the day before Halloween, is the last day for the white scheduled kids. We're going to let them wear their costumes to school and we're going to offer up after the last lunch or at some point towards the afternoon, we're just going to kind of make it more of a activities and, you know, do, you know, take the smaller kids to the gym where we can do 50 people or less and, you know, dance to the Monster Mash, maybe have a parade, a scavenger hunt, games, activities, maybe like a spooky room, something like that. So we're going to control it within our building. And that's what we're going to do and we're going to send that message out to parents within the next day or so. But I've kind of mentioned it publicly here. So there might be some chatter about, oh, you know, the canceling trunk or treat, but it's for good reason and my letter explains why. But we're also offering something and we're also offering something in the school for kids that don't recognize Halloween as something to do. So I think we've covered our bases with it. And let me know if you hear anything about that. So it'll be the first year we have to take a step back. Technically, I postponed it for a year. I haven't canceled a thing. Instead of postponing until next fall. Also, on the idea of doing things differently, there's no real open house this year. We probably would have had it by now. We would have had it probably third week of September if we followed our historical calendar. Lori's doing a great job. She's going around filming people doing a virtual open house. So, hi, my name is, this is my room, and I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be a spoiler. It's going to be somewhat entertaining. It'll be fun, it'll be interactive, it'll let people know who we are, who our new teachers are, who our veterans are. We're going to try to get everybody and then maybe in between the introductions, we could pepper it with some kids doing some things from all the different footage we have from this year and make it fun. And then we'll send that out as a virtual open house. So, you know, we have a lot of new teachers. They get to see who some of our new teachers are in person because they know them and they might have seen them on Zoom, maybe, maybe not, maybe it's just an email name, right? So that's how we plan on doing open house and I think we're going to, I think that's going to be a real smash. I think that's going to come out great. Many thanks, two more. Many thanks to the PTG. They purchased and Andy is installing two of the water refillers.
Yep.
We have one that's already in place. Was that ours or PTG is the one that's up there?
PTG.
And did they buy one more or two more?
They bought us two more.
They bought two more, so they're going to be in charge of three of these things. So many, many, many thanks, generosity and they.
They did a lot of work, put a lot of time into finding them because they are impossible to get.
Yeah.
And they did the impossible.
So if you've heard of any of these things being broken into and missing, I never said anything publicly about us guys. Andy was like, I don't know where they found them, but they came with two of them in the back of a trunk at midnight. They dropped them off and Andy took them and they're being installed.
That's awesome.
Yeah, they've done awesome for us.
That's great.
And also, lastly, I had a nice surprise today. There was a, I don't know, a couple of hours where we lost the security door for a couple of hours. It happens and somebody blew a fuse or something, but so the security door wasn't working. So my boss is terrific, so I ran security guy. I know a little bit about security. I knew where to position myself. I knew where to be and I'm like, I can't sit in my office because if somebody with ill intent comes, they're going to be at the door by the time I see them. So I sat in Kim's office, that's why her lights were on. So I sat down, I could see everybody coming and going, so I almost attacked the mail lady because I didn't recognize her. So that was scary and she's like, I'm just the mail lady. And then, then after, this guy's walking towards the building with his mask on with this pile of stuff. I radio Andy, I go, Andy, you expecting something? He goes, oh, it's the guy that fixed the door, let me know. I go, okay. I go, jeez, they look like pizza boxes. So this guy's coming to the door with pizza boxes. I go, hey, how you doing there, buddy? And he pulls down his mask, he goes, it's me, Jim Driscoll. I go, Jim? I didn't even recognize him and he wants to stuff these pizza boxes and he's kind of doing this and I'm like, what are you doing? He goes, it's, it was World Teachers Day this week. I've just brought these for the teachers. So talk about generous. I was like, Jim, I hadn't seen Jim, I don't know why I saw Jim last. But I was like, how nice. So he brought him in and it was great. We put him in the teachers room. Says, well, thank Jim for just being Jim. What a great guy for our school, huh?
Yes, very nice.
So he did that today, so we want to thank Jim. Yeah, sorry for the long-winded, but it's been a busy month, so that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, so do we have any questions or comments on any of the other administrative reports?
I do for Kim. You said the second amount of money should be received soon. Did we get it? Since you wrote that, I don't know when you wrote them.
The second payment? No. No. The billing, okay, so the state is really, has limited number of people doing all the, the invoicing. They're trying to hire people. I managed to get the first one through because bags and leaders. And because we have to keep that cash flow going with grants. We've got to, you know, bill it out, turn around, get it paid for before we could do a whole lot more. So that's, that has to continue to go. I expect that one probably on Tuesday because of the holidays.
All right, so soon.
Yeah, no, I expect soon. If I, if there was any issues with any of the invoices, I would have heard by now, but I haven't. So I'm, it's just that that particular fund, the CRF fund, we have to do the paperwork totally different and it doesn't go through Jim, which is the software the state uses.
Yeah.
And that one, you can go on Jim. You can see that it's been submitted, whether it's been approved, whether, you know, if they have any issues, they, they'll send, something on the bottom says, send this back, we need this, we need that, whatever. But with this one with the CRF, it's not, it's not like, you just email it in and I, I end up sending like three for, did you get it? Did you get it?
Yeah, yeah.
Just want to make sure you got it.
Yeah, that's what I say.
Make sure if you got it. And, and so, you know, we're pretty scared about that. So like I said, the first one took about two weeks. We get everything back. This Tuesday would be the week two, so I'm really thinking it would be next week because I haven't heard anything. And so, yeah, we're, we're, you know, really working hard to get all of it used, so.
Right, because you're purchasing this stuff and people are waiting for money, correct?
Yeah. No.
No, we're using local funds and being reimbursed by state funds.
Oh, okay.
Okay, because you remember when we do the Warren articles? There's articles in there that say, you know, that we can receive in and we can expend out. So that's why that's there. Okay, so that way we can actually, but, but again, when you're doing that, you have to make sure, because the town, we only have so much.
Yeah.
So we can't like go out and spend $200,000 because that would not be good for our project.
We don't carry that kind of on books.
You know, so it has to be a constant flow. And so that's one thing that I keep pushing. You know, it's like every time we do enough of a grant to bill it, it goes right out, so.
Now we have two tents. We have two tents that are up. And now, is there a list there that you can choose things that's out there to be able to purchase?
Yeah, why don't, nine one is CRF funds updates and I got a bunch of notes. I want to bring you up to speed on where we are with CRF one and two. And I can, and if you don't mind, can we table that question and I'll.
That's fine. No, I just want, I know we have a chance. We have thoughts about.
Yes, we, absolutely. Don't let me forget to mention tents specifically when we get to nine one. I'll put a note right here.
So also just Kim, you mentioned Actifund. What the heck is that?
That is our new software.
That's what it's, instead of Blackboard or whatever?
Instead of Blackboard, yeah, we have Actifund. And what's good about Actifund is like, especially like for all the employees, they can see, you know, we don't have a lot of paper, you know, so they can see all their direct deposits. They can see their contracts, they can, they can see all our documents for HR. If they want to make changes, they can do it online. They put their leave requests online. So again, a lot of it is to cut down a lot of paperwork and make it a lot, for me, especially the leave requests and stuff, makes payroll.
Yes.
Go right by, so it's good. We, the thing with Actifund is they work with me quite a bit. They want, they really want to get into the state of Maine. And so like the installation for us was you work with me, I work with you and we won't charge you for installation. And I was like, yes, okay, fine. So here we are. So now, like a lot of, a lot of programs for like Maine PERS and the state, the state, we pretty much got them all done. I had a few things that they needed to tweak. We got that taken care of. Now they're working on the Maine PERS report, so that way it's just an upload. And so those are really good selling points for other schools. And I know of a few other schools that are wanting to look at their software. So I'm really trying to get this one really up and running well so that way other schools would be more receptive to using it. It's a really good, really good package. And the other thing too that we're working on is to get a time clock that goes actually within the system. So we don't have time clock, you don't have to deal with a time card anymore, so that's.
Yeah, very good.
So we're getting there. You know, there's a lot of things on that that we're really working on. So every quarter, we, they keep, we do a lot of Zoom meetings where every quarter they'll sit there and say, okay, so for this quarter, this is what we're going to work on. And so that's really good, you know, you feel like you're part of their software package to help it grow too, so. You know, you feel like you're part of their software package to help it grow too. So.
Very good. Thank you.
Anything else from anybody for the, for the administrative reports?
Nope. Are we going to go over the, the NWS now? Yeah, they're going to do that. Okay.
Coming up, coming up on the number six. And we'll move on to that right now.
You're going to want the screen, right Lori?
Yeah.
Progress Monitor.
Yeah. So as you guys know, October is all, every October, we look at our baseline data. Lori has it and of course we have Patty here too to help with any of the math questions you might have.
So it took us a little bit longer to get through assessments, only trying, because we only had half the kids here on any given day. So we made sure, two of the assessments that we gave, we gave the reading benchmark assessment to all the kids. And I don't have the sixth, seventh and eighth grade data up here, but typically with sixth, seventh and eighth, most of them or a good majority of them have tested out or at the level where they need to be. So I focused on the K to five reading benchmark data. I think what you'll see here, I just kind of highlighted one of the areas that we need to spend some time looking at these particular kiddos. So what you see is the kids that are beginning or approaching the level where they should be at this point in time. The middle column is the number of students at that level that are meeting grade level right now. And then the last column is the number of students that are exceeding the expectation right now. So right now we're looking at and having conversation around the fourth graders. There's a group of kiddos that we have many, you know, whether it's an RTI plan, an IEP, 504, or just that they're struggling or have some gaps in their literacy. So looking at those kiddos and trying to figure out how we're going to provide support. And it's not that we're not supporting the other students that are in this first column. Go through some of the things that we're working on schoolwide right now. And then you get to the NWEA and you can see that, you know, again, that same group has about 17 students. And remember in the first slide, it was 20. So we're looking at those, probably that same group of kids that just need that additional time with some reading instruction. All the other areas, not too bad. We are focusing on though, that the kids that are below the 20th percentile because those are our high priority students. And typically with Title I funds, you have to identify who those kiddos are and what you're doing to provide them with some, some additional support. So that's, and then, so what we're working on right now for reading is we did start a new, new phonics program, K to two. It's amazing already what the students are doing and the strategies they're already starting to use, even the kindergarten students, how they're already tapping out sounds and making words. So Jolly Phonics, as I put in my newsletter, it comes with not only a sound of the day, but they have a story that goes with it, a chant that goes with it, a motion that goes with it. So it's very interactive and they get to move with it at the same time. We've had two already days of professional development with two consultants that are working with us on how do you do a reading mini lesson that really focuses the students on a particular reading skill or strategy for reading? And then they'll come in and model, they'll plan with the teachers and we'll talk about implementation of that. And then we have our Title I staff and other support staff that are in class and Zooming with kids. So even when kids aren't here, they're getting the additional support at home through Zoom. We have pullout, some small group support. They might not always stay in the classroom, but they'll come out. Especially in the three, four, five cohorts, sometimes we have a student in the fourth grade and the fifth grade that might be on the same reading level. So they might be working together with a Title I staff. With hybrid, each class has support in the classroom. So we made sure that teachers are, that have to manage the online learners plus the in-class learners have that support in the classroom with them. And then we have increased some of our online resources in the area of literacy to support kids in school and at home. So lots of things happening to support the reading and the literacy of the students that are not where they need to be. And then jumping to math, you know, there's that block of students that, again, that fourth grade group we're looking at, breaking down all the subsets and subgoals of those kids and figuring out where the gaps are. But I did highlight, you know, that, that whole block, three, four, five and six, because we want to pay attention to what's going on there with the math. And then, and Patty can speak to this because she's living it every day. But some of the things that she's working on right now is in-class modeling and working with classrooms. And it's, it's really funny when a kindergartner arrives in the morning and wants to know if that math teacher's coming in to teach today because she's a lot of fun. And what are they going to do if she's not? So they're very funny. They're already loving Patty coming into the room because she's always bringing in manipulatives. And one of the things we told the teachers and Patty is really focused on and it's, it's really where we need to go back to, is that if kids need visuals or hands-on something to help them build that conceptual knowledge of a, of a skill in math, and then they can sort of move to the pencil and paper, but if they don't have that foundation first, they really struggle. So we're kind of stepping back and making sure we're doing that. We have in-class and online group support again, and some pullout support. Patty's in some of the tutorials at the middle school level. I've been going through some of the tutorials for the middle school if they need help. And then again, you know, just looking at the online resources to try and figure out what's working and what's not working. So questions about any of that? Patty's here for the math piece and I can try and answer any other questions you might have.
Well, I guess with Patty, getting the NWEA helped to now where you need to focus.
Right.
But you're also trying to do K to eight. I mean, right? Isn't that your role?
Yep.
To do that?
So I made a schedule so that I am in everybody's classroom from K to five. And then in Mark's, my schedule allows me in Mark's seventh grade math, which is fortunate because that was an area that he felt like he was going to need some support in. I also work in one of his sixth grade math classes with a student who we identified through the testing is really at risk right now. So I spend time working with him in-class support and tutorial with a couple of others who are at risk. And so right now, it's, I've already been in touch with the teachers because there's been a lot of modeling going on and they jump in where they feel comfortable and are starting to pick up on the use of manipulatives and things. So the next thing that'll happen in the next, after next week will be that I'm going to step back and do some observation, give feedback, and then I can work with kids within the classroom. So it'll be a push-in kind of a model where I'll actually work with at-risk kids that we've identified through the testing. And then from there, there's one child I work with first thing in the morning. So pull out where I can get them, you know? So we're, we're doing a lot of individualized stuff right now, starting right at eight o'clock in the morning all the way until they leave.
So the other thing is like on paper, you must have done your vertical alignment. That's what I was trying to get at.
Yes.
So you could see where there might have been gaps from-
Yes.
Long ago, not even just long ago, a short time ago.
Yep.
And you're figuring out that-
Yep. We did that. That was the first vertical alignment we did. We're working on ELA right now, but the first one we did was with the math piece and what was missing in the fact that Place Valley needs to be a priority in everybody's stuff. Real world math problems need to be a priority in everybody's trackers and everybody's curriculum. So, and then, you know, we kind of met with the fourth grade teachers this afternoon about doing some flexible grouping within fourth grade because there are two classes. And the fact that, that most of the multiplication standards are addressed in third grade and they lost a third of their year. So strategies on how we can pick up the pieces there. So, you know, there's been a lot going on, a lot going on with the new teachers and, you know, a lot going on with the fourth grade teachers. They're really invested, you know? They've been really easy to work with. I mean, everybody has. Nobody's kicked me out of their room yet.
Sounds encouraging.
I'm excited.
Lori, do you want to tell them how you tested the remote kids?
Oh, I did. So on the date when it actually worked out, because most of the days that we had scheduled some of the remote kids to come in and test was nice enough. So I could meet them at the bus doors, walk around the back and we'd sit under the tent.
Nice.
And so we sat outside. They got all their assessments done. A couple of the remote kids that wanted to take their assessments, I was able, middle school age, I was able to send them a Zoom link, get online with them, get them into the NWEA and I could monitor as they worked their way through the test.
Yeah, I saw that on the screen that you had a little link to the NWE.
Yep. So I could monitor. And typically that's not been the case. NWEA has a secure app that you have to use when you're here at school, but because of the remote issues, they've made it so that they can access it remote if they have the class code and the test is set up. So I did that with a few of the middle school students, a couple of the middle school students. So we got all of their testing done too.
That's good.
So. Busy. We've got as many kids as we could possibly get.
Yeah, that's a, that was a hurdle to-
Yeah.
Get over. I'm sure getting everybody in. With a hybrid schedule and with some kids doing remote all the time.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good.
All right. Sounds good.
All right. Anything else on the progress monitoring? We all set with that? Number six. Then let's move on to number seven. Did the long range planning committee meet?
We did not.
Okay. And then we'll move on to policy. Did the policy committee meet?
We did not.
You did not. Okay.
All right then. But we should set up the long range plan for next month, I think.
I agree.
Just to preview, review, whatever.
Agreed. And policy will meet next week. Next month is scheduled. We already have a schedule for a policy.
Okay. Then we're moving on to number eight, which is new business. And we'll start with the Committee on Inclement Weather.
So there's a lot of talk with remote learning and you just said a little while ago, it's like, you know, too bad we're not going to have snow days anymore. It's a, it's a little tricky in that Kim and I talked about this a couple of times and I have a committee. I have stakeholders at each cohort level that want to sit with me on this and I'm probably looking at late next week to have our first meeting. We really probably need to come up with a plan for, for November, but it's not going to be something to start with that I'm going to bring to you for a vote. At first I was thinking I probably need to vote, make it policy and then, you know, who knows? We had school cancellation in November last year because it's snow.
Yeah.
And the best way to handle this is, you know, go with the administrative practice until we get it right. And then when we have it right, we might want to pass a policy because we have a waiver on the 175 days mandatory school days under state law due to COVID. That, that was able to be pushed through this year too and we'll see what happens in the future. But there's a separate law in regards to making up snow days or days that are canceled for whatever, inclement weather, a boiler goes down. And that is separate of the law about meeting 175 days. And we already pushed our school year back out four days to start a little later to be prepared. So I want to be careful with how we do this because I don't want to be in violation of a different law that I was made aware of. At the same time, I say we move forward with the committee because maybe what we can do is we can work something out after we see if the, if the state is embracing anything on, on remote learning days or snow days. I know it's going to happen because everybody's like, why would you make up a remote day? Doesn't make any sense. So more to come on that. It's a little deeper than I originally thought when I first brought it to your attention after I looked at it. So we'll see. I think it would be great to have a remote learning day that, and again, I come with ideas and the staff usually either improves them or throws them away and comes up with a better idea, where the day just starts a little later, ends probably about the same time. And it's not, you know, you get up at eight and you go to your Zoom meeting and it's, you know, hello, everybody in the circle kind of thing, that we still allow it to be a day where people can move snow and sleep in a little bit and be excited that snow went out. And then have some school, whatever what some school is to come needs determine how long, what does it look like? I got to figure out what I'm doing with hourly employees that, that aren't really doing anything in the building. Then their job is to do something in the building like food preparation or one-on-one with a student who's not one-on-one because they're not in school. So it's a little complex. So I think I'm going to keep it at the procedure level and keep you informed. And if the first snowstorm comes before, you know, like the middle of November before we have our brains wrapped around it, it'll provide me a snow day and it'll probably get a lot of laughs. Probably be a lot of laughs that we're snowed out and you're all at home with your computers, but don't open them, don't turn them on. Because you're going to have to do it again in June, right? So I'll keep you up to date on what that looks like. It's a little deeper than I had originally planned when we were going to roll it out. Yeah. So that's it on the inclement weather. Do you want me to go right with eight two because it's mine?
Yeah, go right on to eight two if you would, please.
So increase in-person instruction. So we're not in the red zone with state. And we've had a very successful five weeks. We're in our fifth week now of reopening Acton Elementary School and feeling pretty comfortable that we should be talking about bringing students, more students back to school five days a week if that works for a couple of reasons. If that works for the students and the parents, first of all, because a lot of people have rearranged their schedules to make our hybrid schedule work. And then make sure that we recheck the spacing so that we can have additional students in a classroom. Okay? It's three feet between students to students. It's six feet between students and adults and it's six feet between adults. As long as we use that and keep that in mind. I know that we can't bring every student back to school. We don't have the room for it. But we can bring more than half of the students back and we need to figure out where that happens. My thinking is, and I've already reached out to kindergarten parents. And I said to all of them, this is not, this is more of a survey. This is not to be put out there as we're going to do it. And they all understood. I said, if you had an opportunity to bring a child back to kindergarten five days a week, would you? And I had some interesting conversations with moms. I didn't talk to any dads. And overwhelmingly they would if I could engineer that. So my next move in the next two weeks is to see what other issues I have. I don't know that I have any transportation issues. I don't need a second bus run now because I'm looking at kindergarten. I have a teacher who can teach it in the building who's not maxed out right now and I can very much make this happen. So I don't see that there's any reason not to bring kindergarten back unless if an event, a COVID event was to happen between now and the time we were ready to plan this. Probably, if I had to guess, it's, it's, I'll be probably telling you how it's going next month with our full-time kindergarten. But it'll probably be very, very late October, if not the first week of November that we have this together because we have to prepare for the second class and we have a curriculum materials, PD for the teacher who hasn't taught kindergarten, those kinds of things. But that's what it's looking like. I've talked to the parents. I also want the public to understand that that is a decision because they're our youngest learners and they, they're not independent. They, they need the foundational skills. It's not pre-K because pre-K is not mandatory. It's, it's not compulsory education. You don't have to. So kindergarten is our first compulsory grade. So I really felt strongly we needed to look at kindergarten and that's why we're where we're at. I'll tell you where my next thinking is. We're always going to be looking at kids on IEPs, 504s and RTI plans. If they need five days a week and we can do it with busing and we can do it in the classroom, we're going to do it. That's constant. So Lori's having her RTI meetings and things are happening and she may say, and I got a list today of kids that may want to come back. That may happen. Sharon may end up with some more students with IEPs. That may happen. So we're always doing that. My next move is to probably look at eighth graders because they're the next group going to the high school. They're bigger. They take up a little more space. Probably have some space issues. We'll see. But if I get kindergarten settled in and that goes good, I'll be looking at the upper grades because they need to be ready for high school and they're, the best instruction we can give them is five days a week. I'm sure of it. we can give them is five days a week, I'm sure of it. So that's probably, you know, Christmas. If all goes well, that's probably a Christmas thinking thing. And then, if we have the space, we can talk about other grades. I don't know that we'll have the space. I'm hoping that while we add students, we also see a softening of some of the regulations. You're seeing it already in stage four of the executive order from the governor for society. It doesn't really do much for schools. But we're looking at 100 people inside seated, and there's, I've read the executive order. So we're looking at reopening society in a way that's a little less restrictive. And I'm hoping that as we add kids and we're safe, and hopefully the flu season doesn't get us, and if all goes well, we'll have fewer restrictions, therefore I can bring more kids back because the restrictions have been lowered. I don't control that last one. I do control kindergarten and perhaps eighth grade. I say I, we as a learning community can make those decisions. So I want you to understand, and I want the public to understand, that that was a commitment from day one. The first letter that went out about reopening was, we're going to start like this, and if we can do it safely, we're going to grow. Well, we've been safe, it's time to grow. Any questions about that at all? Because that's a, that's a big concept, starting to bring back more kids in a, in an environment in which we've built for them.
So in addition to the kindergarten, you're already talking about kids that need a special, special help and need.
Absolutely. And yeah, Sharon, Sharon with special ed, and Lori with RTIs here, and Kristy with 504 isn't, but you can give some examples without using student names of the kinds of folks that we're serving, maybe in areas of abilities or things like that, what they might need extra and why they're here five days.
Yeah, there are students who, yeah, there are students that we have on IEPs that need constant repetition teaching and reteaching. So for them to be here five days a week and possibly hearing the same instruction twice, you know, it might be redundant for your typically developing learner. But for a kid that has a learning disability and needs a lot of reteaching, and that is perfect for that student. And, and we got it set up that they're either in the classroom hearing things twice. And I, I just got a, a report today of, of a person who, the first time that person was given the instruction and was asked to, you know, to, to kind of articulate that they understand it, they were unable to do that the first day. Two days later, the same, the same exact concept was presented to the class, and she knew it. And she was able to actually be in front of everyone else and say, I understand this, and this is, and she was helping another student. Now that was really an example of how it's helping the student's self-concept and self-confidence in terms of, look, I'm helping other kids when I know that I'm, I'm a struggling learner myself. So if, those are the types of students that we have coming five days a week, and we're hoping to continue to increase that, because we do have a few others that we'd like to invite as soon as the safety issues are resolved. But safety comes first. So we have to always look at safety as our number one prong when we make these decisions, so.
Safety, and then you have to look at busing.
Right. That's one of the prongs as well.
Yeah, there's so many elements that go into it all, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you. So let's move on to nine and.
Okay, I wrote tents next to number nine, so I wouldn't forget about tents. So the CRF funds update. So the COVID relief funds are pretty much, the way the system works, as Kim mentioned, we talked a little bit about it, the billing system is different than the GEM system. So the nice thing is CRF two, which we won't get into too much tonight, because there's a lot of planning that has to happen around the next installment of COVID relief funds that has to happen before I can give you any kind of a serious report, will be in GEM. And that'll be easier for Kim, because she'll be able to track the reimbursements. I was going to mention, and Kim got to it, is we're not cash-heavy and like a big system would be with double digits, millions of dollars, where they can float a couple hundred thousand dollars and then not have to worry about when they get paid back. So we're, we're hoping that under the system we have now, we can get everything in and paid back by that December 30th deadline, so that it's not just purchasing, whatever we get, if it's a service, needs to be done. So it's purchase the service invoice and completed the, the project. If it's buying something, it just needs to arrive. It's that simple. We then own it. So I just wanted to mention that, that that's a little bit tricky. And the deadlines, and this was in the paper the other day, a couple of towns were saying they weren't sure they could spend the money and time. And the kicker on that is, it's not that the money isn't needed, it's you have to use it on items that are not in your regular approved FY21 budget, and it has to, the need has to exist because of COVID. It can't just be a need. And when you get into that and then have to have the money expended and the service completed by December 30th, it's, it's tough. And to find some of the things, like these, these water fillers that the PTG found was amazing, because if we wanted 10 of them, and I asked Andy, get them, get them installed by Christmas, he'd probably be like, good luck. Some of these things you can't find. So I just wanted to throw that out there. We're not really struggling here with that. And of course, our allocation is based on the size of our school, so it's less money than some of the bigger systems, and that's what you had to do per in the paper, if you read the paper or anything in the news. So I just wanted to mention that. Now the tents, the tents that we had are gone, because the tents that we had were rental tents they gave us until the ones we ordered came in, which have drop-down sides. Thus, the fire extinguishers that were attached to these, the ones they gave us as rentals did not have drop-down sides, or at least they didn't put the drop sides with them. They called me and said, we need those this weekend, we're going to take those, and yours shipment just came in, we'll put yours up. And I said, well, no sense in putting them up, we're almost into November. I said, why don't you take those tents, give me our new ones, Andy stored them, and in the purchase of those, we had a one-time setup. And setting these things up is pretty technical, it's a special tool, it's pretty heavy-duty stuff, and it's expensive to get them set up. So I asked the manager, I said, I purchased a one-time setup, didn't I? And she said, yes. And I said, guess what? Let's use that one-time setup in April when the ground's dry, and then I can have them up from April till the next November for my one-time setup. No, I've talked over to November, it doesn't make any sense. And we left the tables out there, because without the tents, it's actually sunnier on the tables, and it's actually better. It'll be a few days kids can use the, just the tables. So the tents are gone, they took them back, we have our brand-new ones that are in their packages, I saw when they dropped them off. We've got everything we need. And when Andy tells me the ground's dry enough, and if we determine that's the same place, they'll be up for nine months, and we'll be all set for next year.
Good.
Okay.
Okay, does that take care of number nine, the tents and the funds?
That does for me.
Okay. And I'll look for a motion on the number 10 to go into executive session as per one MRSA 4056A.
So move at 5:59, yeah.
Move by Mary, second by Jeanette. All wasn't bigger, five and O. Okay.